All right. I think we're ready now, or my friends, I think I'm ready now. So anyway, I apologize for that delay. I want to welcome everyone to the October 20th, 2014 City of Stillwater City Council Meeting. And we've got a very special evening today. So we're going to start out by calling the meeting to order. And then we have a couple of guests from our store school. So Ryland Wilson and Connor Zamborski. Would you please join us at the podium? They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ryland and Connor, thank you guys for being here with us tonight. Connor, I always start with the ladies. So I'm going to start with Connor tonight, just to shake things up a little bit. How's that? Is that okay, Ryland? Okay. Connor, what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade. Are you at Richmond?
Yes.
And who is your teacher?
Mrs. Bellamy.
Mrs. Bellamy? Wonderful. What's your favorite subject? What do you like in school?
I like reading.
You like reading the most?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? What's your least favorite?
My least favorite? I'll have to say social studies.
Social studies is the least favorite. That's funny.[104.22][104.22](Laughter). What do you like to do outside of school?
Um, I read a lot and I do, I don't do really much else.
You don't do much else? I bet you do. I bet you do. So did you drive yourself here tonight, or did someone bring you?
My mom brought me.
Your mom brought you? Where's your mom? Thank you for bringing you. You did great, Connor. I appreciate it. Do you guys' council have anything? I want to ask. Hi, Ryland. Hello. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing wonderful. Why don't you tell us a little about yourself? What grade are you in? What class? Those kind of things.
I'm in fifth grade. I'm in Mrs. Zacharias's class.
Mrs. Zacharias's class, fifth grade at Richmond again. Okay. What do you like to study? What's your favorite subject?
I don't know. I don't have one.
You don't have a favorite subject?
Probably recess.
Probably recess. Okay.[162.13][162.13](Laughter). We would have hung out. We would have hung out. That's fun. What do you like to do outside of school?
Well, I like playing outside and I like reading and hanging out with friends and family.
Hanging out with friends and family. That's great. Well, I tell you what. I appreciate you guys being here. And you did a great job. Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. All right. I'm going to come down and join you. We're going to get a couple of pictures. Okay. But before we get started on the proclamations, we are honored because one of our proclamations tonight is to celebrate the 125th anniversary of Stillwater. And so tonight, we have six of our former mayors that are here with us to help celebrate. And at the risk of potentially embarrassing them, I'm going to ask if they'd please join us up here at the council table and if they would take our place for a little bit of this. So I'll tell you what. I'm going to go ahead and introduce them and ask you guys to come forward. We'd have Mayor John Patton. Mayor David Lambert. Mayor Calvin Anthony. Mayor Larry Brown. And Mayor Roger McMillan. The people that I am honored to be sitting with here right now represent a tremendous, tremendous part of our wonderful community's history. And they represent an incredible amount of the growth of our community and our city. I am honored to be sitting in the chair that you all each sat in. And I hope I have done a job that would make you proud enough because these are huge shoes to fill. And it is an extreme privilege to be the mayor of this community and to know the legacy that I am trying to live up to, that you guys established. So I want to thank you guys for your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, I'm going to go to the podium. And we have two proclamations. But the second proclamation, I'm going to ask that you all please join me at the podium as we give the proclamation celebrating our 125th anniversary. But before that, we're going to do a proclamation in connection with community planning, which I think is dear and dear to every mayor's heart. And so I think it's very appropriate that you guys be here to be a part of that proclamation also. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
You going to join me? We have Paula Dennison from our Development Services Department. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas realization of the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month and is an opportunity to highlight the contributions that sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our city. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month in the City of Stillwater and recognize the valuable contributions made by professional planners and planning commissioners in the City of Stillwater and extend our thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals.
I'll say something.[500.53][500.53](Laughter). I've never had a loss for words. And many of you mayors, former mayors, already know that as well. Thank you. It is our pleasure, mine and my staff, to be able to plan for Stillwater and have a future set for us and strive daily to meet that future that we have. So appreciate everything that y'all have done, paved the way for us, planned for us to be here, and the work that our current council is continuing to do. So I say, "Plan on, Stillwater."
I brought a couple of your planners, um, to get a picture with everyone. So you guys jump up here. Okay. I'm going to, if you guys will come join me at the podium. We have a proclamation honoring the City of Stillwater and recognize the 125th anniversary of the City of Stillwater. And we are privileged to be able to have each of the former mayors that are in attendance to participate and read a part of it. And the official proclamation has been signed by all the mayors that are in attendance. Thank you guys very much for being a part of this.
Whereas the City of Stillwater, named for the stream where a caravan of pioneers once settled, was formed by a charter in 1889 that declared the inhabitants of the city be and continue to be a body politic and corporate by the name and style of the City of Stillwater. And?
Whereas the City of Stillwater, only seen in county, is marking its 125th anniversary of recognized a rich history, events, and institutions that helped grow and sustain a uniquely identity for more than a century. And whereas education and industry have prospered together throughout the City of Stillwater's
And whereas, over the past 125 years, the City of Stillwater has improved the lives of its citizens with the introduction of rail service, a waterwork system and dam at Boomer Lake, the construction of a regional airport, an electric and light power station at Boomer Lake Station, the opening of Stillwater Medical Center, reinventing the downtown area through the Business Improvement District Number One, initiating a Water 2040 project to improve water service, developing a pavement management program to extend the life of its streets, and a citywide recycling program, and?
Whereas the City of Stillwater is home to world-class higher education, Oklahoma State University, and one of the best school systems in Oklahoma, including the Stillwater Public Schools and the state career tech.
And whereas the City of Stillwater repeatedly is recognized as one of the best small cities in the country, consistently ranking as number one of the top places to live, fast-growing small towns income level, and is one of the happiest, smartest, and most exciting places in the U.S. according to organizations such as CNN, Forbes.com, and USA Today.
Whereas the City of Stillwater has contributed to the history and culture of Oklahoma and its residents should take pride in the accomplishments of their city while also looking forward to its future.
Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the undersigned mayor and former mayors, do on behalf of the City Council hereby honor and congratulate the City of Stillwater on its 125th anniversary and urge all citizens of the City of Stillwater to recognize this momentous occasion.[773.13][773.13](Applause). Perfect. Okay. Now, we've got a little something to thank the mayors that are here. The city has put together a commemorative 125th anniversary poster that is available here at City Hall. And what we've done is, I will be presenting to each of our mayors, an autographed version of this poster, autographed by all the mayors that are here today. I want to thank you guys for being here and being a part of our wonderful community.
Thank you for joining us.[803.13][803.13](Applause).
(Inaudible).
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 The real world, and we'll turn this back on again now, became something different. We didn't intend for it to, but it did. We all sit in our cars more than we'd like, not always going as well as we'd like. We rush children across the street. We look out on endless areas of nothing but asphalt and cars. And we get older and we realize we failed to build the infrastructures that we could stay healthy and well. This isn't a phenomenon in one city, it's a phenomenon in every town, every size throughout our nation. It's important for us to understand that what completing our streets is all about is correcting a lot of the problems we've had, and the outcome will be that we will add more value to all land. Indeed, a good principle would be that we should spend all future transportation money in a way that it increases the value of all adjacent land, not somewhere else, but adjacent. And if we do this, then we understand complete streets are just basically tools to help us get there. So as we go forward, what I want to do is share that complete streets are really for everyone. They're for the fire service, for utilities, for transit, for walking, for biking, for every age. And indeed, the cities that are building complete streets the best are starting to make more money. They're saving money, and I'll explain that in a minute, but they're actually making more money as cities. This is an example of another college town. It's where Florida State lives, Tallahassee, Florida. And every year, another person gets killed on the street because the street was only designed to do one thing, move a lot of traffic to empty the downtown of its life every night. And that street is way overbuilt for anything that should be a town-gown connection. So this is what we're talking about. How do we make the kinds of changes that would make that a healthy street? This street interests me even more. Notice there's a symbol to walk, but not a single person is walking or riding a bike. There are sidewalks, there are bike lanes. But if you come to this traffic queue at this time of day, you will sit there for 20 minutes because we only provided for one way to travel, therefore, no way of travel works. This happens to be a high school in Maui. Comes as a surprise. I'd like to actually take the topic a little further. What are all these people doing? They're all doing the same thing in common, all five of them. They're loitering. That's the word we use in our country. Now, in Europe, they're lingering. It's a measure of success. So we've even developed a language that punishes us for doing the right thing. But this is the story I really want to tell. If we start with the great-grandfather, George, at age eight, in 1919, was allowed to go fishing by walking six miles. The grandfather, Jack, at age eight, in 1960, was able to walk about a mile to his favorite woods, going to the top. Mother, Vicki, age eight, in 1979, was allowed to walk to the swimming pool alone about a half a mile away. And then the son, Ed, now eight, is only allowed to walk to the end of his block, about 300 yards. This is profound, and this is everywhere. And it tells us what we've lost in just four generations, and now people want to know how to get that back. I'd like to point out that it's not going to be easy, and we have to understand its complexity. Jane Jacobs, when I was still in high school, in 1961, released the book, The Death and Life of Great American Cities. It turned all of planning on its head. We are now beginning to realize that Jane really understood, profoundly understood, how complex cities are, and that's what I'd like to get across tonight. And I think, once you see the pathway, it's going to make a lot of sense. So if we now look at some positive news trends, in America, we see one title after another, where modus are starting to decide they're not going to travel as far, as long, as often. This is the graph to watch. We're measuring the vehicle miles traveled in the trillions of miles in our nation. And notice that it was going way up for a long time, but this is what I really want to show you. We did hit a peak. We'll never go that many miles again. That peak occurred in 2004. And ever since then, and we'll play this one out, you can see in the turquoise, the pre-trend, starting clear back in 1987, a softening, but then, by 2004, an actual decline. The decline since 2007 is profound, and the youth trend, the millennials, it's plummeting. And this is good news because this, if we build the systems to support other ways of travel, really is going to take away the big congestion. It's that complex and it's that simple. So we've changed the way we do things in our country. Almost anyone, we look out at now, riding on a bus, sadly, sometimes in a car, is doing what you see here. We're also watching the next generation. What will the next generation do? And we know they're going to be tuned in to other modes. By the way, an interesting question. If you ask 1,000 people who are millennials which they'd rather give up, their car or their cellphone, they'll give up the car by a vast percentage, and it's amazing. So things are changing. I like to use the word VUCA, that at one time, everything was fairly stable and we could predict things. The military's been using this word since 1987, and now it's profound. VUCA stands for volatile, uncertain, complex, and ambiguous. The rest of the world, the rest of our lives, we're going to live in a VUCA world. That means we have to address the world differently with planning, with everything, than we have in the past. This is my grandson, Jack, oh, maybe two weeks before he could push off on his own. Today, he's seven years old, and he rides two miles to and from school every day because that's a value now held by his parents, who are part of the millennials. I think it's important for us to point out that whatever we spend our money on, that's what we'll get. Spend our money on traffic, we'll get more traffic. It's guaranteed, we've watched this. But if we start spending money more on people, we're going to see more people. We're going to see more of this. We're going to see cities like Stillwater becoming very desirable places to live, to bring the jobs to, because it's the great, good place to live. Another college town, this one in New Hampshire, again, college towns are making their bets on becoming walkable, livable, healthy places. Another college town, Madison, Wisconsin, they started 30 years ago, and they're capturing a lot by having had that lead on so many other towns. This is a very natural, easy photo to take in that town. Let me shift gears a little bit and do a little cartooning. Can everyone here pretend it's the 1400s? Is that all right? Everyone? Okay. Is this a correct view of our solar system? It's the 1400s, remember? Of course, we can all look up at the sky. We can see, everything rotates around planet Earth. Along comes Galileo and Copernicus. They use higher mathematics to say, this can't be, there's no way. It's got to be this. And true enough, this is the way it is, but they were actually led through torture chambers and told to shut up, or that would be it. I'm going to propose something more preposterous. What if this isn't true? And by the way, what if it's a bold-faced lie? We've been lying to ourselves, all of us, that everything rotates around petroleum in the car? And I know that's dangerous to talk about here, but what if this is true? The towns that figured this out are going for the gold. They know where the nugget is, they just have to figure out how to make it work. Now, a couple of other very key ingredients about what completing our streets are all about is, we are now hitting the silver tsunami. I'm in it. I'm actually a pre-boomer. I'm 70. I know what it's going to be like because I'm already making plans for still being able to drive as long as I can. But what I can say is, as we mature, as we become boomers, we want to socialize more. We don't want to lose that. We want our ability to go places and to do things. And indeed, if we start to plan our cities for aging in place, we accommodate every age all the time, everybody. And that's really what we're seeing, is that not just the popular media, but all of the science is now pointing to walkability as the new barometer, the new measure, the new way of getting things done. What elders now want most is to stay in their own neighborhood. Now, they may be willing to move to a different type of house, if the big house is no longer what they need, but it's got to be in their neighborhood. They want the same places of worship, the same friendship circles, the same stores, and things like that. So completing our streets is about really completing our lives with great dignity and honor, and to look out for our elders. There's another component of complete streets, referred to as the Walk Score. Matt Lerner, who you see in the lower image, is a gentleman who, on a dare, created an algorithm to figure out the value of all properties based on their proximity to other things. This is their staff. Not one of them owns a car. They live in Seattle, and they have come up with many other alternatives to fulfill their lives. They still need to drive, so they now use car shares. The other part, and by the way, just real quickly, Walk Score measures from 0 to 100 is how many things are close to you where you live. And the more things are, the higher your score, and a good score, a Walk Score of, say, 70 is profound, and that's what most cities are striving for, to get their Walk Score up. The next measure of success, and this is put together by six or seven of the brightest economists in our land, is that all future jobs are going to be based on place-making. And that means completing our streets, since they make up the vast percentage of our open spaces. What they're basically saying is, if we do get the best of place, we will attract the most long-term jobs. This is what people want. They want places that feel comfortable to them, that are welcoming to them. They can be anywhere from sidewalk systems and streets on up to trails and other systems. And here's where it gets into the money. This is big, this is profound. A city the size of Stillwater could basically not need as many cars, let's just say 15,000 as a number, so we can put a dollar figure to that. By not having to have families with, say, two cars, some could have fewer, that keeps $127 million floating in the local economy. This is all money that would go somewhere else, but is now staying here. And if you could even more, great, you've got even more money that stays locally among dentists and doctors and every person. But here's the big one, this is the big one for the city. To maintain fire service in a well-connected, a gridded neighborhood, which you've got a good portion of, you can cover a vast number of homes, and that brings your fire service cost down to $159 per house. But if we build sprawl, disconnected streets, streets that don't really connect, it now costs $740 to cover one household. So how we lay out our city means we will either spend a lot of money or a lot less. We multiply that times police protection, water, sewer, cable, everything, even UPS deliveries, all make more sense in a space that is well-connected. The next point, land that is a sprawl pattern, strips, typically leases out anywhere inside the range of $5 to $15. If instead, we build more village-style, this happens to be a savanna, the land now is worth anywhere from $25 on up to $65 a square foot. One acre sells a lot more. In fact, it's 800% more when we get down to what the actual yield is on return on taxes. So let's take the good bones of Stillwater, the street pattern, the block form. This is what we really look for, to see what we can rescue immediately and what might take a little longer. This is Port Hound, I'm sorry, it's Fort Pierce, Florida, and circa, you can tell by the paddle wheeler, a long, long time ago. And I'm going to highlight this building to show you what happened over time. And again, it was a matter of taking the eye off of the prize, how things actually work. So this town was on its last level of support budget-wise, and then they figured it out about 20 years ago. And because of that original good bone structure, they were able to rescue the town, and this is almost exactly what it now looks like. So this town is now becoming very wealthy. They can afford to have good parks, good streets, good everything, because they had that original bone structure, and they made sure they got back to it. Now, even that town has areas that look like this. So the question is, if 80% of the built America is now suburban, can we rescue that? The answer better be yes. Turns out that it is. This is where complete streets exert their great power. You get more street connectivity, we get better behaving streets, we pill place. So just to give a couple of examples, this is a street that we transformed in West Palm Beach. It used to be five lanes. When it was five lanes, it was devaluing all land within a walking scale, all the way for two and a half miles, about a half mile deep on both sides. They took it down to two lanes, they knew how the traffic worked, what the numbers would produce, and each home went up in value that year about $110,000. That's solid. But here's the cool thing, because the road, instead of being five lanes, when students go to cross this street, they're only holding back the traffic a little bit. We need short signal signals. So the point is, don't build roads any bigger than we need. You increase the value of homes, and you'll move more traffic. Sounds counterintuitive, but it works. Another point, Stillwater, as all cities in America, needs shade, and shade matters. But to the main streets, it matters even more, that people will spend, on average, 12 cents more on the dollar in a street that has canopy as opposed to one that's stark and so on. You've done a very good job with your main street, with your trees, but you can extend that to other streets and so on. Just a quick summary on a few things. I want to talk about the importance of what the modus perceives when they pull off of your freeway. Say they, I'm going to tell a story, this is Brattleboro, Vermont. You realize that you need to buy a toothbrush, so you go into the store. Your next option is get back on the freeway. But what if we change this gateway? And what if it feels and looks like this, that picks up the character of Brattleboro? Now, the goal is to go down and see the downtown. This has got to be a profound town. So everything we're talking about is, how do we add more value to land? How do we do it with our limited transportation dollars? And how do we make people feel good when they're out of their car, that they're in a really good place, that they can spend more time and so on? This is the first roundabout that I helped build. It's in Bradenton Beach, Florida. We were losing one life a year here, and so pretty bold on Florida's part. This was about 20 years ago. We put in the first roundabout in the state, first modern roundabout. It went in, there has yet to be a recorded crash. We're moving 18,000 cars better than we were before, and now the land value has gone up that we're getting brand-new buildings and so on. Same thing here, this is Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, Alabama. We found out late in the day that everyone wanted a village here, but then learned that they were about to do this. And so we said, do you want that? And looking over to my left that evening was the traffic engineer. Her name was Kit. And Kit started to cry. And I knew Kit, so I said, Kit, why are you crying? She said, Dan, we're at 90% land's completion. We can't change this. Long pause, and then she said, can we? And I said, Kit, I gave you permission. And what they're now doing is this, they had to go back to the Alabama DOT, they had to spend additional planning monies. But this is what the answer is. You build enough good, quality places closer to people, they won't drive as far. They don't need to. And the land value goes up, and the city does better. I also want to get in this concept, that we build for what we call the target speed. What's the speed you want people to go? Not what are you going to sign it for and so on. What do you really want? And to maximize the sale of any store or street, lower the speed in commercial districts, the higher the yield. This is this town that went from what you see on top to what you see below on their main street, and they've already attracted over $900 million in new buildings. It is profound. It's being written up in magazine after magazine across our country. It almost feels like you've gone to Europe. But what you've really done is you've gone to a part of Los Angeles that really figured this one out, that towns are for people, and now they're getting new museums and new investments throughout their town, new housing right downtown, and so on. Let me just skip ahead because I, just one more image I want to get in. I apologize for that. I put in a couple more images than I really needed. I wanted to get across this image about what is a complete street. And first of all, say, there is no design. What a complete street is, taking in consideration all of the adjacent land uses, all the needs, and then coming up inside of the right-of-way you own or can afford, how do you now make that, something to perform for fire service, for people walking, biking, driving, for freight, for everything? And so, forget the numbers, just remember the concept, that a complete street is always going to provide for all people all the time. So I wanted to leave time at the end to answer any questions, if I could.
It's not a question, but I, this is very exciting. Happy to have you here. And I especially like the emphasis on aging in place, and I'd love to invite you to come out and see the senior cohousing community.
I would love to see that.
North of town, I think you'd like it.
I work with students, young 20-somethings, and I think they would be very interested in something like this. I think there is an emphasis on walkability, so very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
When you were in Stoudt, this was the spring, I believe, the first time you were here, and we had a chance to meet and talk, and my first comment to you after you kind of explained to me the little bit higher-level view was, how in the world could you put this into place in a city? And you looked at me, and he didn't laugh, so that was good. But you made a statement, and I don't remember your exact words, but what I walked away with was the statement of, how do you eat an elephant? The one bite at a time. But I believe the way you said it to me was, one block at a time, one neighborhood at a time, one area at a time, and you grew it out from there. And that actually gave me some comfort, was probably the right word, in that this concept is not something that we come in and just go boom and drop it on our entire city. Is that a fair, did I, do I remember?
No, no, you did a great job of explaining it. I think the important thing is that when we go into a town and work with a town, as we're doing here, we would like to look at your next projects and give you some guidance on how you can save money and build a better road than conventionally we're doing today. And almost every road we've ever looked at, we've found those answers, they're out there. And some of the answers are very simple. Don't add more lanes than you need. Put your energies into your intersections. The intersections are what do the work. And always, always see how the land uses work, and again, it can get right down to a single block, and sometimes it's a single business that might be coming in. There are ways for a good business to greet the street and work, or to further the problem by not being the right type of a building for that street. So it's exactly that, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Great pleasure. Thank you.
Dr. Peak, do you have anything?
Yes, just to kind of wrap up, we have a citizens committee that's currently working on developing a complete streets policy recommendation. The plan for that is, is this committee will develop a recommendation that will then be presented to Planning Commission, and then ultimately come to the mayor and council for review and evaluation. So we anticipate probably early 2015, having that policy ready for you to review.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Resolution CC 2014-13. Mr. Dorman, what's the story with this one?
This is just notification that we have actually codified the last set of ordinances that the council passed. Every year, we go through the process of actually putting the code sections that you pass in the book itself. And we have just published the third supplement to the code that was adopted in 2011. There are copies of them on file at the county law library, the public library, three here with the city clerk, and you can always get them online at MuniCode. And we do have copies for sale to the public if someone would like to buy them. And the publisher sets the price. I was not quite sure where that number came from.
I asked that question.
This is something that we all need to be thanking, that invention of the internet, to not have to deal with paper all the time on our city code. It's quite a bit. Okay. So we just need a resolution adopting this resolution, or, we need a motion adopting this resolution?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt Resolution CC 2014-13. It's approved 5 to 0. It'll take us down to ordinances, and we have two ordinances, both on second reading, Ordinance 3280. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 31 Municipal Court, Article 1 in general by amending Section 3119, arrest for non-traffic violations, citations promised to appear, et cetera.
Any questions on this ordinance? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 3280.
Second.
Motion and a second on Ordinance 3280. It's approved 5 to 0. Now, Ordinance 3281.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1615 West 12th Avenue from A Agriculture District and RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family District to O Office District.
Any questions on this ordinance? Motion?
Motion to approve Ordinance 3281.
Second.
Motion and a second on Ordinance 3281. And that's also approved 5 to 0. Takes down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
A number of executive session requests tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307B2 to discuss labor negotiations with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 102. Secondly, request an executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307B1 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Attorney John Dorman. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307B1 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Dan Galloway.
Anything else?
That's all tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further this evening.
All right. Counselors, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. I believe the only things that I have, I think, and I'll check our schedules as we head into executive session, but I believe I have radio tomorrow morning on KSPI, but if I don't, I'll remind whichever one of you has it. And then I do, I know I have radio Wednesday morning. And then I want to thank OSU and all students. It's Homecoming Week, and so there's going to be a lot of extra activity, a lot of people in town. So thank you for all those activities that do provide a great spice to Stillwater. So it's going to be an important week. Let's have fun with Homecoming, and just win a football game.
Go Pokes!
So, and go Pokes. Someone else is tagging in, I can't use that. Okay, anything for upcoming meetings? Okay. We don't have any appointments this evening, so we're going to recess the city council meeting. Then we're going to call to order the Stillwater Utility Authority meeting for October 20, And we have, pulled up the wrong agenda. See your hard copy? Thank you.
Move approval on the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second on the consent docket.
Motion and second on the consent docket. That's approved five to zero. That's going to take us down to General Orders for Professional Service Agreement for the Cost of Service Study.
Good evening, trustees. I'm Bill Millis, Water Utilities Director, and I want to talk to you tonight about the Cost of Service Study and Rate Design. Briefly, what I'll do is talk about the consultant selection process, tell you about our project approach, and then close with our recommendation. For the selection process, we started in August and requested proposals for professional services. Professional services are different than soliciting for a construction contract in that the selection is based on qualifications. So I want to select the most qualified firm to provide the service, and then negotiate the scope and the fee before bringing it to you for authorization. That began in August with, we issued a request for proposals directly to about two dozen firms and also on our website to try to get as broad a coverage as we could. We received six proposals. You can see on the screen the name of the six companies that submitted proposals. And then a selection team comprised of Dan Blankenship, Kristi Cluck, and myself reviewed the proposals and the qualifications of those six firms and shortlisted it to two firms. And those names are there, Economist.com and Raftellus. Next, each of those firms was invited in to make an oral presentation to the same selection team and to hold an interview between us and them, answer questions and so forth. And based on the two interviews, the selection team selected Raftellus. And after that selection, they provided a more detailed scope of services. I should back up and say, with the proposal, each of them provided, you know, a general scope of services based on our description of what the city of Stillwater needs are regarding the rate study and a cost of service study and a rate model, excuse me. So we reviewed, Raftellus followed up after their selection with a detailed scope and a detailed proposal itemizing all their fees. And we reviewed that and found it acceptable. And so that's what the item before you tonight is the result of that negotiation and that process. The next few slides I have here are directly from the proposal that Raftellus made to us, and they'll kind of demonstrate why Raftellus stood out as being, you know, being very well qualified to help us with the work before us. And this is how they started their proposal, you know, by recognizing our goal of determining the cost of providing studies and establishing a rate structure that would cover those costs and meet the needs of our customers, our ratepayers. Not only is Raftellus one of the largest firms in the nation for providing this kind of service, you know, it's somewhat specialized, but they're well-known in the country. And you can see, you may not recognize these, but these are manuals published by established industry groups, American Water Works Association and the Water Environment Federation are national industry groups of professionals regarding water and wastewater. And staff on the Raftellus staff actually are contributing authors to these manuals, and I think the third one there is a textbook that they co-authored, that certain members of their staff co-authored.
I have those on my coffee table, don't you?
Yeah, I didn't recognize those.
Are they signed?
Yeah, Anne's got one right there.
You sleep well, don't you?
I do.
This slide shows one of the key things they did in talking about their project approach. I think they brought out, looking at, you know, all the steps that go into the project and how it builds on the first step towards the final step. The first step there is identifying financial and pricing objectives. And that was, you know, a key observation, because what that means is bringing both the trustees and the public into the process at the beginning and having a conversation and deciding, you know, what are the objectives of the design of our rate design? And then as they go through the process of developing a rate design based on those objectives established at the beginning, we get to step five, and it seems like the ultimate step, but it also circles back, because what step five calls for is assessing the effectiveness of the chosen plan or alternate plans and how they meet step one, the objectives that we've set, which these next two slides will describe in a little more detail. We won't go into it, but just to show you that here in step one, they meet with the different stakeholder groups, A, B, and C might be.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So I take it you're wanting to recommend these guys. I just have a question. Where are they out of? Where are they headquartered? Were you satisfied that they would be here when you need them in person? Will our contract require them at scheduled dates to be here to consult with you guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got scheduled meetings, and that was one thing to work through, you know, that they didn't, weren't completely aware of at the beginning when we had the, when they first submitted their proposals. So like I talked about refining the scope of services, they included visits, they included kind of a study session with the trustees, as well as two public sessions, listening sessions to work on that step one.
Well, it's, you know, just from my point of view, you guys are the ones that are going to have to work with them, and you need to go through a process, and it sounds like you have, and recommend a firm that you think fits Stillwater, it fits you guys. So, I mean, you've run past a rabbit as far as I'm concerned.
We appreciate you asking questions at this point. We prepared our presentation for you. Thank you for this conference.
Appreciate that. So this is just a structure. You meet with different stakeholder groups, staff, trustees, the public, and establish what objectives are important, what are most important, you know, more important than ones that are not critical. This slide is that top of that pyramid, I think step five, and it's looking at the alternates that the consultant presents and assessing how well those alternates meet the objectives that were established at the front end. The last item I've got is, this is the project schedule proposed by Raftellus based on the interview and with the scope of services. You can see there that we're running a little behind, so February is right now our target completion date for completing the study, February 2015. And I'd be glad to answer any more questions or just summarize the recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Millis?
Would like to say out loud again that there are two public meetings, and for persons who are interested, they should be, have their heads up looking for those dates.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We'll publicize them, but it'd be good to be listening if the public is interested. The recommendation, one, we recommend that the trustees authorize staff to execute a professional services agreement with Raftellus Financial Consultants, and that you authorize expenditures up to $146,000, including contingency.
All right. Any questions or comments on staff's recommendation? Hey, one thing I greatly appreciated about the report and what this process is going to be, that I think is a good growth step from the BEC study from six years ago, is, I mean, what I pulled out of this, and if I'm off-base now, it's a great time to let me know, that this is not only to figure out what's at cost, but also the philosophy we're going to have on our rates. Are we going to just collect enough to make sure water flows from A to B right now? Or are we going to make sure we pay for the replacement of items? And if so, at what rate? Is that a fair summation?
Yeah. It is.
That I greatly appreciate, more than just the what's it going to cost approach. As I said, it wasn't set for public hearing.
We were going to set to, aren't we?
There are going to be plenty of public hearings on the conversation. So this is, there's no decision tonight that's affecting water rates, ma'am. And I think, I believe that those are definitely being taken, will be taken into account. There will be plenty of opportunity for public input on all issues. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Multiple, at least two meetings is what was in the report.
Yeah, actually, our intent is, there'd be a study session with the trustees, which is a public meeting, and also the two town hall type meetings. And in those, like Mr. Millis had indicated, and you too, Chairman, is that we'll be talking about the objectives, basically the philosophy or the thought process behind how we set rates, what's important to us as a community as a whole, not only, not staff, but the trustees and the customers that we serve.
I really liked that idea. We'll have a shot at giving them our thoughts on philosophy.
Before we even start crunching numbers.
The public can do the same thing, and
Yes.
We'll have an overall big-picture philosophy on how we want our rates to be.
Absolutely. The chairman summed it up really well. It's not just, last time was more of a exercise in going through the process and crunching the numbers. This one, we're going to take a step back and we're going to say, hey, what is the basis? What do we want? What do we want the outcome to look like? And that's going to be the, I think, is a real key, real key difference.
I figure I can throw any rocks at any firm you recommend.
Absolutely. Better the firm than me, sir. Thank you.
I was just going to say, we do value the public's input, and you are welcome to email any of us at any time about any of your thoughts. And when we are allowed to come forward with our input, then we can include public input.
Staff recommendation, Blake, can you put that back up? The slide of the staff recommendation.
One line, you can just restate it, maybe. There we go.
I would make a motion to approve staff recommendation for a services agreement with Raftellus Financial Consultants.
Second.
Does that include the authorization?
Yes.
All right, motion and second to approve the staff recommendations as presented. And that is four to one with our trustee, Nina Harris, saying no. Okay, this is the last item on the SUA agenda, is our motion to adjourn SUA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
As approved five to zero, and we will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. First item is the consent docket with two items on there, items A and B. Someone wish to remove item A or B?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent docket. Proceed. And that's approved five to zero. That'll take us down to General Orders, presentation and request for proposal. Mr. Galloway?
Thank you, Chairman. Let me see if I can pull this up. Okay, this evening, I want to talk to you briefly about, pardon? Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. I've got it under control. I want to talk a little bit about some city-owned property downtown. We've got a lot of things going on downtown Stillwater the last seven years. We've had tremendous amount of reinvestment on Main Street, other parts of our Business Improvement District. And I think all of that's an outgrowth of a couple of things. The, talking about master planning, about nine years ago, we developed the Core Commercial District Master Plan, Development Master Plan. It was done with an organization that goes by PUMA, is their acronym, and so it's become called the PUMA Plan, but it dealt with both the strip, campus corner, and the downtown district. One of the recommendations was to develop a Business Improvement District, which we did, and we've had multiple millions of dollars of investor money poured into our downtown, creating new restaurants, new dining establishments, new shops, refurbished buildings for downtown residential. And I think it's continued to grow at even a more rapid pace. The, some other things that are happening in the bid district don't look nearly as glamorous. We've got some property that was occupied by some former buildings, it's kind of fallen into disuse. And to talk about that a little bit, I'll bring up the video. This is an aerial view, I wanted to remind everybody what area that I'm going to be talking about. To try to put this into perspective, this block that you're looking at with two gray areas on it, those two gray areas are former building sites. That's the block surrounded by Eighth Street, Ninth Street, Duncan Street, and Husband. This picture is taken from the southeast. The street to the upper right is Eighth Street, the street to the left is Ninth, and the diagonal street at the top is Duncan. That block is relatively vacant. We do have parking spaces on the northeast quarter of the block. The gray area in the northwest corner is what was formerly occupied by a one-time lumberyard, one-time plumbing store, the business, the last business that was there was the Wynn Nelson Plumbing. We often refer to it as the Wynn Nelson Building. The building became really in bad disrepair, the cost of refurbishing far exceeded its value, and we removed the building. The city owned the entirety of the block except the southwest corner, the other gray area, that's gravel at this point. There was a Quonset building there owned by Payne County. It was used as a holding detention facility by the Sheriff's Department or a jail facility. With the construction of the new county jail, that was no longer used. And we worked with the county, and Payne County deeded that property to the city. Again, as a part of the downtown redevelopment for economic development purposes, we owned that entire block. We also owned the block immediately west of that, which is the community center, which will bring into the center of the picture. We, that building, most of you know, was formerly a junior high school. City acquired that several years ago. And the purpose was to be a community center and a meeting facility for meetings in Stillwater. We have refurbished over the years the first floor of that building, and we do have many quality meeting rooms. We have some large meeting spaces, what was the old gymnasium. We now have some sit-down dinners there, most of you have attended functions there, other performances in that area. We have the Winfrey Houston Theater, has been renovated, a wonderful theater in that building, and multiple meeting rooms. It also has a second story, which we've never renovated. It is not currently in use. It has space for many, many meeting facilities, meeting rooms, large and small, could be developed on the second floor, but we never have. The drawback, I think we, some people thought of this as maybe as a convention conference center type of facility. It's got some drawbacks for that, doesn't have an exhibit hall, as most convention centers do, and there are no hotel accommodations nearby. But again, that's its current use as a community center. And I think what, at least what I've been looking at in the last couple of years with staff, is those two blocks are a vital part of downtown. They connect the Main Street Business District to what we call our Cultural District, which is the community center. You go south to, the next block is, half of it is owned by the Children's Museum, the Montessorium, they have plans to develop that there. Immediately south of that is our Multi-Arts Center, and immediately south of that is our library. In fact, in the PUMA Plan, the blocks from the community center down to the library was one leg of the Z. The Main Street Business Development was another leg of the Z, in the middle of the Z was the two blocks. Z was the two blocks I'm talking about this evening. Now, I've looked really closely at the PUMA Plan. The PUMA Plan suggested a lot of uses for that vacant block. It suggested maybe you could put a farmer's market there, maybe you could put a little outdoor performing arts area there, maybe you could put some water feature there, green space. There was also some talk of maybe putting some additional parking, or maybe some, even some retail on that block, depending on the growth of the community. One of the, we've had several master plans, and we've got a quality of life and infrastructure community that are both looking at our master plans and are we still using them. We do still look at them. And, for example, the PUMA Plan, I've just talked, it's still a living document, we use it every day, to an extent. One of the other studies that we did, we partnered with a chamber seven years ago and commissioned a feasibility study, not a master plan per se, but a feasibility market analysis for a convention center. The study was completed, and it determined that Stillwater has a strong market that could very easily support a 30,000 to 40,000 square foot meeting area convention center with a 20,000 to 25,000 square foot exhibit hall, if it had the exhibit hall and adjoining hotel. That has never been, come to fruition yet, but I think with the growth, we're finding more and more hotel convention operators are beginning to look at Stillwater and ask about that possibility. The convention center study located three or four areas in the city that they felt would be prime locations for a convention center like that. One of those was downtown. Got to thinking about that, looking at the PUMA Plan, looking at this facility, and the building that we own as the community center has so much potential. We've shown what we could do with refurbishing of the first floor. It has the capability to house more than sufficient meeting spaces for a convention center. What it lacks is a nearby hotel, and it lacks an exhibition hall. And then also looking at the other need of the block, the question became, can we accommodate all of those kinds of things on those two blocks that the city owns? Can it accommodate green space in a park, and a farmer's market? Can it accommodate retail? Can it accommodate convention center? And I'm not an expert land development designer, so I turned to our planning department, and with a little bit of assistance from the planning staff, the question that I proposed to them is, let's take a look at all of the purposes and demands that we know there's a market for downtown, including the PUMA Plan's green space, farmer's market, and today even, space for food trucks to park. We know that there's an increased demand for downtown residential, second, third, fourth story living quarters. We can't meet the demand. Developers are trying to find space for that. There's also some demand for more retail space. So I asked the planning staff to actually look at this, what buildings would be required to accommodate all those needs, and can you possibly arrange them on this block? And we'll take a little further look and show you kind of what they came up with. This is a concept, just to show what you could do on these two blocks. This is not a recommended plan that you're going to see. I'm not saying this is what it's going to look like in the future. In fact, this is a pretty grandiose picture that you're going to see, but I'm going to show you the same blocks you just looked at from the air. That's the two blocks, looking at it from the air. This view is from the north. What you see in the center would be a, the front of a covered exhibit hall that could be connected to the community center to create a full-scope convention center. To the left of that would be hotel accommodations for the convention center. You can get a view around the entire two-block area. This would be on 8th Street. This is just south of the OSU Postal Plaza Art Gallery. You would see on the corner of, that's the corner of Husband and 8th. Those buildings in the, in the picture there would represent first-floor dining establishments, retail specialty shops. Second and third floors could be office, they could be upscale apartments, loft apartments downtown. There is a demand for all of those. And you can see there's obviously a large green space, park-like setting, to serve both the residential and the retail area. That is along Husband. Come down to 9th Street, across the street from Stillwater News Press, this was, this area could be accommodation of covered farmer's market spaces along there. This design was laid out kind of interestingly. Again, it's just a concept, but this space for farmer's market has paved area on both sides where the farmer's trucks could come in and back into those spaces. That paved area could also accommodate special events for food trucks, and all the food trucks could lie in the area. And again, it's not a recommended layout, but it's an interesting that the area would support that. We know that those kind of uses would generate a lot of demand for parking. This area is a parking garage, just conceptually, on the area that's currently the parking lot of the community center. This project does, kind of follows with what we were talking about with complete streets. Again, this whole block, two blocks, could take on a more pedestrian-friendly kind of an atmosphere. That section of Duncan Street is not a heavily traveled or main arterial street. We may, might even want to consider closing these, adding these two blocks together and closing that section of Duncan to accommodate this. Just a quick look, the park-like area. And again, it's not a recommendation, it's a, it's a concept, possibly, and whether the hotel recommended by the convention study analysis, it should be 160 to 200 rooms. That would probably wind up with probably a six, seven-story type of building. We just looked, and this concept is, the rooftop of whatever building there might be a wonderful place for alumni association gatherings, receptions, convention receptions, to add another dimension to the downtown. In fact, we went a little further, we have a, we have a small drone in the city, by the way, where we got some of these pictures. This is what it would look like if you were on the top floor at a, an event in those. So I wanted to see what it would look like from the sixth floor if you were in downtown, and you can get a bird's eye view of all of the city of Stillwater, clear picture of campus and so forth. Again, it's just a concept, but it's more than a concept, and I'll tell you why, is that I have actually been approached by no less than two different groups of commercial developers from Stillwater. I've been approached by no less than two major development companies outside of Stillwater who are very interested in this concept. They believe it is feasible for a developer to possibly undertake this concept. They believe it's economically feasible, and I think it's worth exploring. It's interesting, we just talked about the RFP process for cost of study. I think this is another opportunity for a request for proposals. We don't know all of the details of how this property might be developed. I'm recommending, and I prepared and sent all of you a draft of a request for proposals. I would like to publish locally and nationally a request for proposals, and accept for the next 60 days, proposals from any developers to show us their qualifications, their ability to develop, but most of all, present to us a concept of how they would plan a development to accommodate these uses on these two blocks. This is not a commitment to do any project. I think it's a safe avenue to approach. It's a request for proposals. We're not committing anything to the project. I am, in case, and some of you have asked this, several people have asked me, I've had developers ask me about the potential of buying this property from the city. I'd like to go on record right now as saying that I recommend that the city does not consider sale of that property. I think those two blocks are an asset that this city needs to retain for the benefit of the community in perpetuity. But I do think that if you find a quality development partner who could turn those two blocks into a development that this community would be proud of and would economically benefit this community for years to come, I think the negotiation of a public-private partnership through a land lease could be a potential for this project. Again, if there are experienced developers who believe they could make that investment in our community, and we could have a benefit from it, I would like for the trustees to have the opportunity to look at those proposals. So I'm recommending that you authorize me to publish that request for proposals. We publish it for 60 days, which takes us to the first of January roughly, first part of January. I would like, I don't know whether we'll get one proposal or 20 proposals. I think it's going to be more than one, maybe a little less than 20, but I would not be surprised to get a dozen proposals. I would like to probably, at that point, ask that the trustees, maybe appoint a subcommittee to work with the staff and I to do the first review of all of the proposals. Would like to get it down to the top two or three proposals and let the trust as a whole have an opportunity to interview, meet with those proposed developers, and determine, is there something there that feels right for Stillwater? If we get no proposal that feels right to the trustees for Stillwater, we've lost nothing. If we find something that you all, that's your call, if you all believe it would be a good partner to go forward with, we can explore a development agreement. So I think it's an opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We've got a vacant lot, we've got a lot of demands and needs of a growing city, we've got a vibrant downtown that I think could be enhanced by the right kind of development. But I think we need to spend some time and look to see if there's a qualified developer we'd want to be a partner with the city. That's, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I would recommend that you authorize proceeding with the RFP.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Galloway?
I have one little question on the page, right above guiding principles, and I apologize for not calling you about it earlier, but proposal must incorporate an appropriate green space, public and private use, which will accommodate farmer's market, patio dining, entertainment, and attractive landscaping. I don't know what else might be out there besides farmer's market, patio dining, entertainment, and attractive landscaping, but I wonder if it could be, include, but not limited to.
Yeah, we could, I could certainly include that, and I want this to be, even though there aren't, as you've seen, there's some minimum requirements, I want the developers to understand that.
Appropriate green space.
I think we would welcome some thinking outside the box, not to say that what you just saw is not a little outside the box, but I think we need to make, give them the opportunity to be as comprehensive as they feel they can. One of the things that we really encourage, I hope you noticed in here, we're going to make copies of all of the city's master plans. The corridor redevelopment district, overlay district, even though it's not downtown, it's adjacent to it. They need to look at the feasibility study on convention center. They need to look at the PUMA Plan. They need to look at our C3 Plan. They need to, you know, one of the criteria they have to express to you and to me, that they have really developed some feeling for what this community is all about and what this community wants. We want them to develop something that fits Stillwater, not a cookie cutter project from Timbuktu. That's not what we're after. This has to be tailored especially for Stillwater, and that we'll show in the proposals, and that's where we'll have a chance to look.
I hope they will talk to perhaps SGA at OSU and let them have some input, since we are a student community, and I know that students would love something like this.
They would not be smart developers if they didn't, if you're coming to a college town. I think you need to do those things. We'll also, when we, when we send out the publication, we'll put in the publication, and it says, it talks about sending questions to us. We will also, we'll have a list of those kind of suggestions for those consultants who do contact us, about groups they can talk to here at the university, the student groups, and others in the city. Some of them may want to even come and have some kind of a town hall meeting to talk to the public. I'm not sure that, that's not ruled out, we would allow. Other questions? Again, it's, I know the concept drawing looked a little bit ambitious, but again, when I look at what we have said and what we've adopted in all of our plans downtown, when I say "we," the council has adopted over the last six, seven years, I think it focuses on all those needs, and if we can find a way to bring those together into something productive, I think it shows what some good planning can resolve it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Comments, questions?
Economic development, quality of life, improvement, just overall in Stillwater, I, I'm excited to see the different proposals.
Okay, so we've got.
Is there a motion in there?
I was going to say.
I have a motion to authorize the issuance of a request for proposal for the development program.
Second.
All right, awesome. We have a motion and a second. And that is approved five to zero.
Thank you. We will get on that immediately.
Is there a?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn CETA.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn CETA. As we adjourn, I want to thank city staff that helped work on the video and the presentation, that graphics that they put together were very enlightening.
Tom Coates in the planning department, and Blake Sashen, our public information office, both bearing instrumental in helping put that together.
Where do you keep that drone?
Pardon?
You said there was a drone.
It's a small one. We obtained that primarily for public safety, for, we have wildfires, it'll give the fire department an access to see areas where we can approach wildfires. It may have some limited use in the police department, but we're finding we can use it for planning purposes. You know, it's very difficult to take an aerial photograph of that city block, and so Blake was able to do it pretty easily.
That's wonderful. All right, that motion to adjourn was approved five to zero, so CETA is adjourned. We will reconvene the city council meeting, and there were three requests for executive sessions for the items listed. For those requests, is there a motion to move into executive session for those items?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. And that is approved five to zero.
Mr. Norman, we want to bring Margaret in right away.